I'd like to have a motion to close private session, please.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, I'd like to call the November 21st meeting to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 5th, 2016. And by posting the notice in the Fort River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law, would you please stand to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on October 17th, 2016?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on October 17th?
Move it.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. And could I have a motion that the board approve?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Student representative comments, who'd like to start tonight?
I'll start tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Homecoming was a huge success. We almost doubled our profit from last year, so we were very excited about that. The Executive Board attended the Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th. And the Executive Board President spoke on behalf of student government. Winter formals coming up for the freshmen and sophomores, they're allowed to bring any current LTHS student as a date, no graduates or outside guests. Tickets are sold today and tomorrow for $15, and next week for $20. And the dance will be on December 3rd at 7 o'clock.
Our newest, our next event coming up is Battle of the Classes. It's a week-long competition between each grade that will end in a final battle. This is on December 23rd, which is the day before winter break. T-shirts are being sold now, they're $10. They're being sold now through December 1st. First place gets 50% of the t-shirt money, second place gets 30% of the t-shirt money, third place gets 15%, and fourth place gets 5%. And our next SGA meeting is December 14th in Cafeteria South, it's our winter party.
Okay, thank you very much. Pretty busy. Okay, Mr. Wiggly, turn it over to you.
Thank you. I would first like to introduce, before we get started, Mr. Brandis, high school principal, to begin our presentation. Do them up.
At times, you don't get to celebrate all the accomplishments, we'd like to, but tonight's a special night where we have a lot of students, current and also graduates here tonight that we're going to recognize. So again, it's one of the best parts of my job is to recognize those students. First, I'm going to introduce, and we're going to celebrate Alyssa Caputo's accomplishments as Female Senior of the Month, and I'd like her to come up and join me now, please. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good afternoon, this is Mr. Brandis, and I'm here sitting with Senior of the Month for November, Alyssa Caputo. And here to celebrate her accomplishments is Taylor Rizley. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Taylor Rizley, I'm here with November Senior of the Month Alyssa Caputo. Congratulations, Alyssa, how do you feel about being chosen?
Thank you, I'm so honored to be here.
Very proud of you. What do you do outside of school?
Outside of school, I cheer on varsity captains for fall cheer, and also cheer winter. And outside of school, I do volunteer work at the Trenton Mission, and I organize clothing drives there, and also collect donations for people.
Sounds like you're very busy. Who, which teacher has impacted you the most?
There are so many teachers that have impacted me. I'd have to say Mrs. Fruchette, because she's taught me so much, and I've learned so much in her classes, she's such a dedicated, caring teacher. I also have to say my coaches, Coach Alberto and Catherine, because they've inspired me to work hard and be the best that I can be, especially me.
Alyssa is such a good student, she also always has a positive disposition, that's what makes her such a pleasure to have in class. She's always friendly and smiling, and she's always dedicated and always does her work.
And for college, where do you plan on going after graduation?
I apply to MAMET for psychology, time to get critical.
Congratulations. Congratulations to everyone, we senior of the month. For Alyssa Caputo, I'm Taylor Rizley.
On behalf of the entire board, congratulations, and we will begin the clap, okay? We'll get it to you, we don't know where it is.
It might be a UPS somewhere else right now.
So congratulations, Alyssa, lots of things.
I'd like to take a moment too, to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Caputo on their daughter's accomplishment. Next, we have our male Senior of the Month, Nicholas De Oliveira, please join me up here, congratulations. See all Nicholas's accomplishments. Hello, we're back, and I'm sitting here with November's Male Senior of the Month, Nick De Oliveira, and to celebrate his accomplishments is Evan O'Leary.
Hi, Evan O'Leary, Nicholas De Oliveira, the November Senior of the Month, how are you, Nick?
I'm great, how are you, Evan?
I'm doing good. So first of all, congratulations, you know, that's also to be part of this.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, worked hard towards this.
So what sports do you play?
I play a lot of lacrosse.
Is there any reason why you love lacrosse?
Just a great sport, I love lacrosse, I'm a freshman here.
Have you played in all four years?
Yeah, yes, since I came this year.
Congratulations. Outside of school, what else do you do?
I work out, go to the gym every day, play a lot of lacrosse, I play recreational soccer.
So sports is a big part of your life?
Yeah, sports, sports and school.
What teacher has biggest impact on you in your high school career so far?
It's just Tara, Mr. Cousin, they've definitely helped me once I got into STEM. They've definitely pushed me and helped me decide what major I want, they've helped me with every project. And STEM has been also a big part of me, because it's helped me, you know, learn time management and tough classes, I'm good.
You go to school, what college are you looking at?
I'm looking at RBI, I'm actually committed there for lacrosse, I plan on studying mechanical engineering.
Well, that's awesome, congratulations, and congratulations again for your November Senior of the Month.
He's an extremely hardworking individual, he's always been, I've only had him since the sophomore year, but ever since then, he has been one of the best students I've had inside of my STEM classes. Extremely hardworking, extremely dedicated, let alone an athlete, and congratulations to him for getting into RBI.
And on behalf of the entire Board of Education, lots of love to you, congratulations on the great school. Really, congratulations.
I'd also like to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. De Oliveira and Nicholas's family, it's quite an accomplishment. At this time, we're going to hand it back over to our student representatives to do our Unsung Hero of the Month.
Ally Textor is known for her generosity, wit, and her willingness to help others. She's involved in many clubs and organizations throughout the school. This student can be found volunteering and brightening others' day. She never hesitates to make sure everyone feels welcome and an important aspect of the school. Ally is an avid member of the Student Government Association, the Association Against Drugs and Alcohol, and the Interact Club, and the Math Team. She volunteers as much as she can, doing ever needs to be done without hesitation or complaints. Along with activities, she manages her time well with honors and advanced placement classes. In addition, Ally is on the Lacey Varsity Girls Golf Team, who finished the season with an amazing record. This student is a great addition to the halls of Lacey Township High School and everyone around her.
And on behalf of the board, this is quite an honor, being the unsung hero, you do so much, a lot of time not acknowledged for doing all, so to me, this is one of the most special awards you could get, so congratulations.
I have one more young man I'd like to introduce tonight. On behalf of the Lacey Township School District, it's a great honor that we recognize him tonight. He's spent over six years servicing the citizens of Lacey Township and being committed member of the Boy Scouts. The Lacey Township School community congratulates Timothy Swain on earning an honorable rankings of Eagle Scout on June 8th, 2016. Congratulations.
It's quite an honor to be an Eagle Scout, it takes a lot of time, dedication, we don't have enough Eagle Scouts, so congratulations, and kudos to you, you did a good job.
You have no more room on that.
No, really, it's the back.
Oh, my socks stole my clothes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was going to say, you can see Timothy's project in Gilly Park, he did park benches that are along the trails and along the run, so I'd like to congratulate Timothy and the Swain family on this remarkable accomplishment. Congratulations. At this time, I'm going to invite up Karen Hughes, our athletic director, to recognize our state championship softball.
Good evening, everybody, it's my privilege to be here tonight to recognize an incredible group of young ladies who did an outstanding thing in the spring of this year in winning a state championship. There's so much that went into the accomplishment. They started in March and certainly had some goals in their mind as to what they would like to accomplish. I think they had some success early on in the season, and at some point, they realized that their success and the continued success was attainable. So, I can't speak on behalf of the girls, but I can tell you that they were hardworking, the unity within the group was what it takes to have the kind of success that they've had. I think if they were to identify a couple of the characteristics of the group itself, I think they would come up with some things that are very family-oriented. I think they counted on each other, I think they were sisters to each other, though they weren't blood sisters, I think they were as close as sisters as you can be. I think the unity was a family, I think they did many things together, and I see some of them getting a little sad up there, but you know, the truth of the matter is, it took that kind of a commitment to each other to accomplish your ASOUTH championship, and then certainly your South Jersey Group Three State Championship. And if I had a number of other state champions in the room, I would imagine there would be a lot of parallels between you and them, because it doesn't happen to everybody, that's why it's exciting, that's why you're recognized six times since you accomplished this in June. You know, it hasn't been one party, it hasn't been two parties, we've gotten together a number of times to celebrate your accomplishment, and the reason is, is because it doesn't happen all the time, and it truly is a special group of people led by special coaches, and Tom Faulkner and Terry Stewart, Christina Polino, Mary Kate Geisinger, who am I missing anybody, coach? Trish Winkle, she's in Hong Kong right now, she's out of the country, so she couldn't be here. I felt bad for her, but I was like, I guess you gotta go. So, she went. These ladies finished with a record of 22 and 7, most wins in the history of the program. Just an incredible group of young ladies. The ironic part of it is, in four months from now, on March 3rd, you get to start the process all over again, for those of you that are hanging around. And those of you that are moving on, you need to come back and not forget where you come from. And I offer you that opportunity, always, to come back to where you come from. At this time, what I'd like to do with the help of Mr. Brandis, is I'd like to call the young ladies in attendance here tonight to come up here and get a certificate. There are a couple of people that couldn't be here tonight because they had other commitments, but I will recognize those people at the end. So at this time, the first young lady I'd like to call up is Monica Brignola. You know what, if you want to stay up here, yeah, why don't you stay, and then we'll take a group photo, we haven't done those in a while, so we might as well do one for softball. Yeah, and all the girls, I'm hoping that they're sporting their state championship rings, which were generously donated by a number of organizations that should be recognized in the four minutes tonight, as well as their championship shirts. So certainly, they have all the bragging rights in the world, and they don't hesitate, those shirts are awesome, by the way, and certainly the ring will be with them forever. Their legacy has been written, and obviously, they can go wherever they go, but their legacy here at Lacey Township High School will not soon be forgotten. So the next person up is Emily Diesendorf. And one of our representatives at the front table this evening, Kristin Santoro. One of our coaches in attendance this evening, Mr. Terry Stewart. And the leader of the program, and our head coach, Mr. Tom Faulkner. What I'd like to do is just to mention those that couldn't be here this evening, so at least they get recognized. One of the managers was Tyler Dubrinsky, George Gardner, and Rachel Devlin were the three managers. I thought those boys were not dummies. Certainly, they had it right when they joined the softball team that had championship written all over it, but I think they liked being with this group of young ladies, and I thought, not dumb boys, that's for sure. Sarah Fisher, couldn't be here this evening. In the opacity, but I see mom over there. This young lady just signed this week Full Ride to Binghamton University to be a pitcher in September's Chelsea Howard. And the other coaches that I mentioned earlier this evening, Trish Winkle, Mary Kate Geisinger, and Christina Polino. So, nothing would be more pleasurable than to come back here next year at this time and to do the same honors. So first of all, congratulations to you on a much broader spectrum this evening. We thank you for bringing greatness to our high school through the sporting arena, and we certainly wish those of you going on, we wish you great luck, for those of you returning, we'll be watching and wishing for greatness to this team in the coming spring season. Thank you very much, and congratulations, ladies.
On behalf of the entire board, congratulations. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations.
I'd like to take a moment too, to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Caputo on their daughter's accomplishment. Next, we have our male Senior of the Month, Nicholas De Oliveira, please join me up here, congratulations. See all Nicholas's accomplishments. Hello, we're back, and I'm sitting here with November's Male Senior of the Month, Nick De Oliveira, and to celebrate his accomplishments is Evan O'Leary.
Hi, Evan O'Leary, Nicholas De Oliveira. The November Senior of the Month, how are you, Nick?
I'm great, how are you, Evan?
I'm doing good. So first of all, congratulations, you know, that's also to be part of this.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, worked hard towards this.
So what sports do you play?
I play a lot of lacrosse.
Is there any reason why you love lacrosse?
Just a great sport, I love lacrosse, I'm a freshman here.
Have you played in all four years?
Yeah, yes, since I came this year.
Congratulations. Outside of school, what else do you do?
I work out, go to the gym every day, play a lot of lacrosse, I play recreational soccer.
So sports is a big part of your life?
Yeah, sports, sports and school.
What teacher has biggest impact on you in your high school career so far?
It's just Tara, Mr. Cousin, they've definitely helped me once I got into STEM. They've definitely pushed me and helped me decide what major I want, they've helped me with every project. And STEM has been also a big part of me, because it's helped me, you know, learn time management and tough classes, I'm good.
You go to school, what college are you looking at?
I'm looking at RBI, I'm actually committed there for lacrosse, I plan on studying mechanical engineering.
Well, that's awesome, congratulations, and congratulations again for your November Senior of the Month.
He's an extremely hardworking individual, he's always been, I've only had him since the sophomore year, but ever since then, he has been one of the best students I've had inside of my STEM classes. Extremely hardworking, extremely dedicated, let alone an athlete, and congratulations to him for getting into RBI.
And on behalf of the entire Board of Education, lots of love to you, congratulations on the great school. Really, congratulations.
I'd also like to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. De Oliveira and Nicholas's family, it's quite an accomplishment. At this time, we're going to hand it back over to our student representatives to do our Unsung Hero of the Month.
Ally Textor is known for her generosity, wit, and her willingness to help others. She's involved in many clubs and organizations throughout the school. This student can be found volunteering and brightening others' day. She never hesitates to make sure everyone feels welcome and an important aspect of the school. Ally is an avid member of the Student Government Association, the Association Against Drugs and Alcohol, and the Interact Club, and the Math Team. She volunteers as much as she can, doing ever needs to be done without hesitation or complaints. Along with activities, she manages her time well with honors and advanced placement classes. In addition, Ally is on the Lacey Varsity Girls Golf Team, who finished the season with an amazing record. This student is a great addition to the halls of Lacey Township High School and everyone around her.
And on behalf of the board, this is quite an honor, being the unsung hero, you do so much, a lot of time not acknowledged for doing all, so to me, this is one of the most special awards you could get, so congratulations.
I have one more young man I'd like to introduce tonight. On behalf of the Lacey Township School District, it's a great honor that we recognize him tonight. He's spent over six years servicing the citizens of Lacey Township and being committed member of the Boy Scouts. The Lacey Township School Community congratulates Timothy Swain on earning an honorable rankings of Eagle Scout on June 8th, 2016. Congratulations.
It's quite an honor to be an Eagle Scout, it takes a lot of time, dedication, we don't have enough Eagle Scouts, so congratulations, and kudos to you, you did a good job.
You have no more room on that.
No, really, it's the back.
What were you trying to talk about?
I'm sorry. You can see Timothy's project in Gilly Park, he did park benches that are along the trails and along the run, so I'd like to congratulate Timothy and the Swain family on this remarkable accomplishment. Congratulations. At this time, I'm going to invite up Karen Hughes, our athletic director, to recognize our state championship softball.
Good evening, everybody, it's my privilege to be here tonight to recognize an incredible group of young ladies who did an outstanding thing in the spring of this year in winning a state championship. There's so much that went into the accomplishment. They started in March, and certainly had some goals in their mind as to what they would like to accomplish. I think they had some success early on in the season, and at some point, they realized that their success and the continued success was attainable. So, I can't speak on behalf of the girls, but I can tell you that they were hardworking, the unity within the group was what it takes to have the kind of success that they've had. I think if they were to identify a couple of the characteristics of the group itself, I think they would come up with some things that are very family-oriented. I think they counted on each other, I think they were sisters to each other, though they weren't blood sisters, I think they were as close as sisters as you can be. I think the unity was a family, I think they did many things together, and I see some of them getting a little sad up there, but you know, the truth of the matter is, it took that kind of a commitment to each other to accomplish your ASOUTH championship, and then certainly your South Jersey Group Three State Championship. And if I had a number of other state champions in the room, I would imagine there would be a lot of parallels between you and them, because it doesn't happen to everybody, that's why it's exciting, that's why you're recognized six times since you accomplished this in June. You know, it hasn't been one party, it hasn't been two parties, we've gotten together a number of times to celebrate your accomplishment, and the reason is, is because it doesn't happen all the time, and it truly is a special group of people led by special coaches, and Tom Faulkner and Terry Stewart, Christina Polino, Mary Kate Geisinger, who am I, am I missing anybody, coach?
Trish.
Trish Winkle, she's in Hong Kong right now, she's out of the country, so she couldn't be here. I felt bad for her, but I was like, I guess you gotta go. So, she went. These ladies finished with a record of 22 and 7, most wins in the history of the program. Just an incredible group of young ladies. The ironic part of it is, in four months from now, on March 3rd, you get to start the process all over again, for those of you that are hanging around. And those of you that are moving on, you need to come back and not forget where you come from. And I offer you that opportunity, always, to come back to where you come from. At this time, what I'd like to do with the help of Mr. Brandis, is I'd like to call the young ladies in attendance here tonight to come up here and get a certificate. There are a couple of people that couldn't be here tonight because they had other commitments, but I will recognize those people at the end. So at this time, the first young lady I'd like to call up is Monica Brignola.
You know what, if you want to stay up here, yeah, why don't you stay, and then we'll take a group photo, we haven't done those in a while, so we might as well do one for softball. Yeah, and all the girls, I'm hoping that they're sporting their state championship rings, which were generously donated by a number of organizations that should be recognized in the four minutes tonight, as well as their championship shirts. So certainly, they have all the bragging rights in the world, and they don't hesitate, those shirts are awesome, by the way, and certainly, the ring will be with them forever. Their legacy has been written, and obviously, they can go wherever they go, but their legacy here at Lacey Township High School will not soon be forgotten. So the next person up is Emily Diesendorf. Kayla Kohell. Ellie Wright. Caitlin Hughes. Erica Haloka. Brianna Lynch. Julia Rusak. And one of our representatives at the front table this evening, Kristin Santoro. One of our coaches in attendance this evening, Mr. Terry Stewart. And the leader of the program, and our head coach, Mr. Tom Faulkner. What I'd like to do is just to mention those that couldn't be here this evening, so at least they get recognized. One of the managers was Tyler Dubrinsky, George Gardner, and Rachel Devlin were the three managers. I thought those boys were not dummies. Certainly, they had it right when they joined the softball team that had championship written all over it, but I think they liked being with this group of young ladies, and I thought, not dumb boys, that's for sure. Sarah Fisher, couldn't be here this evening. In the opacity, but I see mom over there. Erin Gados. This young lady just signed this week Full Ride to Binghamton University to be a pitcher in September's Chelsea Howard. Kelly Fleck. And the other coaches that I mentioned earlier this evening, Trish Winkle, Mary Kate Geisinger, and Christina Polino. So, nothing would be more pleasurable than to come back here next year at this time and to do the same honors. So first of all, congratulations to you on a much broader spectrum this evening. We thank you for bringing greatness to our high school through the sporting arena, and we certainly wish those of you going on, we wish you great luck, for those of you returning, we'll be watching and wishing for greatness to this team in the coming spring season. Thank you very much, and congratulations, ladies.
Ready, one, two. Brandis, who you went. Smile. Is Susan in here?
Um, I've been in a couple.
Okay. Okay.
I'd like to take a moment too, to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Caputo on their daughter's accomplishment. Next, we have our male Senior of the Month, Nicholas De Oliveira, please join me up here, congratulations. See all Nicholas's accomplishments. Hello, we're back, and I'm sitting here with November's Male Senior of the Month, Nick De Oliveira, and to celebrate his accomplishments is Evan O'Leary.
Hi, Evan O'Leary, Nicholas De Oliveira. The November Senior of the Month, how are you, Nick?
I'm great, how are you, Evan?
I'm doing good. So first of all, congratulations, you know, that's also to be part of this.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, and congratulations to the great school. Really, congratulations.
I'd like to take a moment too, to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Caputo on their daughter's accomplishment. Next, we have our male Senior of the Month, Nicholas De Oliveira, please join me up here, congratulations. See all Nicholas's accomplishments. Hello, we're back, and I'm sitting here with November's Male Senior of the Month, Nick De Oliveira, and to celebrate his accomplishments is Evan O'Leary.
Hi, Evan O'Leary, Nicholas De Oliveira. The November Senior of the Month, how are you, Nick?
I'm great, how are you, Evan?
I'm doing good. So first of all, congratulations, you know, that's also to be part of this.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, and congratulations to the great school. Really, congratulations.
I'd like to take a moment too, to congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Caputo on their daughter's accomplishment. Next, we have our male Senior of the Month, Nicholas De Oliveira, please join me up here, congratulations. See all Nicholas's accomplishments. Hello, we're back, and I'm sitting here with November's Male Senior of the Month, Nick De Oliveira, and to celebrate his accomplishments is Evan O'Leary.
Hi, Evan O'Leary, Nicholas De Oliveira. The November Senior of the Month, how are you, Nick?
I'm great, how are you, Evan?
I'm doing good. So first of all, congratulations, you know, that's also to be part of this.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, and congratulations to the great school.
hopefully, and begin to do that. So, and that, recognize the work that's done in there. I'd like to highlight at least one school to also, their activities for the month, rather than go to all and just get a piece of. So I picked this month, the Mill Pond School, where I attended the recognition for Veterans' Day, along with Mr. DeGeorge, Dr. Clark, President Downing, and Mr. Sensen, who also attended. Mr. Downing opened up the ceremony and welcomed everyone. The gymnasium was renamed for the day by Mr. Faulkner in a gracious way. It's called Hero's Gym for the day, which I thought was a great idea as our veterans walked in and received. It was an emotional day, too. I think it strikes a lot of people different ways, looking at vets and looking at the current servicemen and Veterans' Day, how special it is. Really a shout-out and a thank you to the proud Paul Advisors at Mill Pond, Ms. Anzalone, Pearson, and Subsy, who did a great job organizing the program, and also to Bill Moss and our VFW and our local vets for their presentations in the classroom, and their visit to a classroom with a special educational patriotic gift to a selected class. I thought that was also a plus for the event. The high school, I was very pleased to see my first theatrical presentation, Almost Maine, last Wednesday night. I was very impressed with our acting ability of our students. I've seen a lot of shows and plays over the years, and it was really interesting to see them assume such diverse roles. And plays can be very difficult. I was used to the musicals, but I think the performance and the work really did show through, and I applaud Mr. Bodnar, the director, and all the cast and the crew of the show. Last week also, we received three passive alcohol sensing devices, right, we have down here. This is not a tube sensor that you blow into. It's passive, so it can wand and take a breath sample. After tonight's approval of policy, we will have a breath alcohol policy, 5535. After tonight, we'll be prepared to train our administrators and post formally the regulation and the policy. I would anticipate the devices are ready to roll out, and they'll be utilized at the middle school and high school initially at social events, dances, proms, et cetera, beginning in December. So this is a plus, and it's another deterrent. This also falls right in line with, last Thursday, Mr. Zelinski, Dr. Clark, and myself participated in a podcast with Mr. Greg McNeil from Cover2.org. He's from northern Ohio, and he got wind of our random drug and alcohol testing programs here at the middle school and high school. He had a son who passed away from overdose of heroin last year, and his mission was to celebrate best practices and share them nationally. His website called Cover2.org, which is pretty impressive in resources. So he really, he was really impressed with what we're doing. He says that we're setting the standard here in New Jersey, and it's a best practice that he's either trying to emulate and bring out to the Midwest. So we're not alone, and I think we're sharing best practices across the board. Last Thursday evening, I also attended a Sammy Symposium at Abseghamie High School along with board member Ms. McAvoy. Several nonprofits provided, along with a panel, some pretty heart-wrenching real-life stories in regard to suicide addiction and mental illness. Each spoke from real-life experience, which was powerful. Looking at the opportunities that this symposium provided, we hope to possibly share a similar presentation through our task force in town, and possibly also look at bringing that to a presentation as we get closer to red night out in March 2017. Also like to send a thank you out, because we received monies from the township in regard to ongoing agreement for subsidizing our Channel 21 programming along with the township, so we're appreciative of those monies. It goes a long way to get our program where we want it fast. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move on with board committee reports. Mrs. McAvoy, would you like to do curriculum?
Sure. The curriculum committee met last week. Dr. Clark, myself, Mrs. Downing, Mr. Giordano. We got word from Dr. Clark that 42 7th graders, the most ever in history of Lacey Township, will be participating in 2016-2007 Johns Hopkins University Talent Search. So that's wonderful news for the district. Dr. Clark will be getting a committee together with Supervisor Taylor, leading a committee to revise the current elementary report cards to more of a standards-based report card, and that committee will be meeting all year. The district mentoring plan was reviewed, the professional development plan was reviewed. A committee will be meeting throughout the whole year to relook at the gifted and talented program, and hopefully something with that will start next September. The guidance plan was reviewed, and there's some really wonderful opportunities for out-of-state travel for different students. The AP Biology Club is going to the American Museum of Natural History. The computer clubs at high school will be going to the New York Call of Computer Sciences. An autistic, the autistic program will be going to the Gershwin Theater, and there's others, too, if you want to look in the board report. Wonderful opportunities that we're providing for the students in the district. And that's it. Thank you. President Downing.
Mr. Giordano, you have a report?
Sure. Talk about finance, what we discussed in the finance committee. We talked about the facilities management and project planning for that, and updating the spreadsheet for the district's long-term facilities plans. We also talked about the audit, which we heard reporting on this evening. We discussed food services and provided an update on the program and what we're looking to do to enhance that program. We also talked about purchasing surveillance, surveillance devices to shore up the district's surveillance operations. And we discussed transportation and some of the things that we're looking at from a transportation perspective to look with the busing situation, what we're going to do with that. And that is pretty much it from a finance perspective.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bidla?
Yeah. Thank you.
Policy?
Uh huh. Thank you, President Downing. The policy committee met on November 7th, and we were very busy this past meeting. We reviewed 26 policies, some first reading and some second reading. You'll see the second reading one voted on tonight. In addition to all of these policies specifically, we also discussed the date of the 2017 reorganization meeting and confirmed that it will be January 2nd, so we look forward to seeing all of you here then. We are, we talked about following up on strategic planning and the discussion of possible creation of an education foundation. We discussed the role of the dean of discipline at the high school. We discussed the application process. We discussed the fact that the application process has begun to create an international school at the high school. We've also discussed the application process beginning to create a ROTC program at the high school. And we discussed plans being developed to assist the district in meeting the potential enrollment challenges from the new residential development being built in town. We talked about a variety of other things, but I won't bore you with all those other details. That's it for now.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the public. If anyone has anything they'd like to ask, just raise your hand, we'll acknowledge you. Saying done, we'll move on to board comments. Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes. First, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Have a safe and happy holiday, especially if you're traveling. And as a reminder, the Lacey Township Christmas Parade will be on Sunday, December 4th, at 3:00 PM on Lacey Road. Congratulations to our Students of the Month, Nicholas Di Oliveira, Alyssa Caputo, and unsung hero, Ally Texter. Great job. Belated congratulations to the girls softball team state champions. It was great to see them all here tonight. Homecoming 2016 was a wonderful event this year. The attendance topped out at around 700. The students had a great time. On October 25th, 26th, and 27th, the NJ SBA workshop was held in Atlantic City. I attended many informative sessions and completed my last required mandated training course there, Governance 3 Student Achievement. Some other sessions I attended involved labor negotiations and health benefits. Thank you to the Cedar Creek School for inviting the board to their Halloween parade. It was great. There was a financial aid college seminar at the high school November 1st. It was very well-attended. It's never too early to plan for college. Go to CollegeBoard.com and sign up. Both parents and students are able to sign up on this website. And subscribe to the SAT question of the day, it does make a difference, and try the ACT, too. The November 4th Veterans' Day Memorial at Mill Pond was very special. And then on November 9th, Forkett River School also hosted a Veterans' Day Assembly. And Cedar Creek hosted their Veterans' Day event November 14th. Thank you very much to all the people that made these events a memorable and educational experience for the students. And thank you to all our veterans for telling stories of their military services. Freedom isn't free. All gave some, but some gave all. We must never forget. On November 16th, I attended the opening night of a Lacey High School play, Almost Maine. It was a great show. In the morning of November 17th, I attended a concert at Lenox Harvest School, and then in the evening, I attended the Ocean County School Board meeting. The Ocean County VOTEC admissions coordinator spoke about the various programs they offer. Visit their website for details, ocvts.org. Friday, November 18th, I attended the Forkett River School Harvest Hoedown. What a great tradition and so much fun while introducing the students to dancing. And congratulations to board member-elect, Nick Morandi. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. According to the New Jersey School Board Association, effective school board leadership is the key to student achievement. The NJ SBA publishes a booklet titled, Who Does What in Public School Governments? And since I am usually asked so many questions about that, I'm going to read just a little bit, "The Board Member as Representative," on page 1. School board members are state officials empowered by state authority govern the public schools at a local level. They are representatives of their community with oversight authority derived from the New Jersey Constitution and the legislature. The laws, rules, and regulations governing public schools pass through the legislature to the State Board of Education. The State Board staff, the Department of Education, has the authority to carry out the mandates created by those higher bodies. The Board of Education develops policies that govern school operation in compliance with state and federal laws and regulations. The role of a Board of Education is to see that the school district is well-run. The written policies of the Board provide guidance and direction to the chief school administrator for making decisions and taking action. Well-crafted policies minimize ambiguity between the Board and its chief school administrator and promote the smooth operation of the school system. Board members have no legal authority except when sitting with other board members in a legally constituted meeting. An individual board member cannot make decisions for the Board, take actions for the Board, or speak for the Board unless the Board has authorized them to do so. Likewise, concerns of individuals in the community which are brought to the attention of a board member cannot be acted upon by that board member, but are referred through established channels, such as the Board President and/or the Chief School Administrator. When the chain of command is used properly by citizens and board members, communications are improved, and the Board of Education can act as the final arbiter on issues which have not been resolved at other steps in the chain. Above all, board members are responsible for and to the district's students. Every policy they approve and every action they take must be based on what is best for the education of those students. And I have an extra copy of the booklet if anybody's interested in that, but most of the information is on www njsba.org, I believe it is. And now, I have a spotlight on Mrs. McAvoy. She always does the spotlight on the graduates, but tonight it is with sadness that we will soon have to wish Mrs. McAvoy goodbye and good luck as she departs our Board on December 31st, when her term ends. Mrs. McAvoy, while holding a full-time job, has been one of Lacey's most active and prominent board members, in my opinion. This year, she diligently served as Chair of the Curriculum Committee. Always very visible in the community for many years, Mrs. McAvoy has held numerous positions on PTA, PTSA, from Cedar Creek to the high school. She has done so much for the Lacey community over the years. She has been a member of the Lacey Rotary Club, a member of the Municipal Alliance, Task Force, Food Bank Helper, and most recently brought her elementary school to become state champions in the world of Sustainable Jersey for Schools. Mrs. McAvoy and her school were honored this past month at the New Jersey School Board Association Workshop by Sustainable Jersey for Schools. They met all the point requirements for Silver Certification. Her building won the state championship in the elementary category. Mrs. McAvoy is the Green Team leader. Mrs. McAvoy has attended many, many, many school events, several county school board association meetings, and NJ SBA trainings in spite of her busy schedule. Donna is a true advocate for education and children, and I just wanted to thank Donna for her three years of devoted service to this district, and I'm honored to have served with her these past two years. You will be missed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Call Donna?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go to Sean next, and we'll come back to you. Mr. Giordano?
Thank you, President Downing.
You're welcome.
Try to be quick. Now, just for record, Donna, you're going to be here at the next board meeting, so I can save mine for December.
Sure, okay.
I'll wait for December. I want to thank Nicholas, Alyssa, and Ally, Rensler, Polytechnic, and Monmouth University, some fine schools, yet another example of what this district, what this high school is putting out there, and certainly will continue to put graduates out into great schools, into the community. The girls softball team, to be part of a team is something special, to be part of a winning team is something special, but to be part of a state championship team is truly quite a feat, and it's a testament to good coaching, you know, great athletes coming together at the right time, and so that's quite an accomplishment. Congratulations there. I'd like to congratulate President Downing on the election, as well as Nicholas Morandi. Soon, Nick, this will all be yours. So, so welcome. And also want to thank Tom Croll, too. You know, there's three seats available for four positions, and the one thing that I can't stress enough is, is anybody can come up here and run. Anybody can come up and run for election. And if you're really passionate about this town, if you're really passionate about this district, and you want to make a difference, you should come out and do this, because it's, you know, it's a privilege and honor, and, you know, I'm happy and blessed to have been elected again for a second term, but I would encourage more people to come out and take an active part and an active role in this, in this school district. So with that, I will, now, I want to say one more thing, real quick. You're going to, you're going to put this out, right? But Kennedy, Lorette, you can't really see this, I know you can't focus it on the camera, you don't have to, but this is really exceptional artwork for 7th grade. It's really a beautiful piece of art. So it's awesome that we're going to recognize that, put them up in the board office, I think that's, that's wonderful. So with that, I will conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
Okay, thank you. Thank you to Mrs. DeSensa. That's pretty scary. I didn't know she knew that much about me, but she did miss a few of the committees on one. That's okay. But anyway, my favorite part of my comments are recognizing the former students. So my spotlight tonight on the Lacey graduates. Morgan Dizendorf, the daughter of Ann Taylor, our supervisor here in the district, graduated from the high school in 2013. She's presently a senior chemical engineering student at the University of Delaware. She'll be studying abroad in Australia this winter and taking chemical engineering courses at the University of Melbourne. Morgan is already working part-time at Compact Membrane Systems, a research-based chemical engineering company. So that's awesome, Morgan, keep up the good work. The second one is Matt Lembo. He graduated in 2012. He did one year at Naval Academy Prep School in Rhode Island. Now he is in his last year at the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis. He is the president of the US Naval Academy Pistol Team. He is also on the Dean's List, the Commandments List, and the squad leader of his squad. He just got accepted at the US Naval Flight School in Pensacola, Florida, which he will attend in his graduation to become a Navy pilot. So both of them, Morgan and Matt, congratulations, and we're glad that you learned so much at Lacey.
So, with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
Okay, thank you. Thank you to Mrs. DeSensa. That's pretty scary. I didn't know she knew that much about me, but she did miss a few of the committees on one, that's okay. But anyway, my favorite part of my comments are recognizing the former students, so my spotlight tonight on the Lacey graduates. Morgan Dezenendorf, the daughter of Ann Taylor, our supervisor here in the district, graduated from the high school in 2013. She's presently a senior chemical engineering student at the University of Delaware. She'll be studying abroad in Australia this winter and taking chemical engineering courses at the University of Melbourne. Morgan is already working part-time at Compact Membrane Systems, a research-based chemical engineering company. So, that's awesome, Morgan. Keep up the good work. The second one is Matt Lembo. He graduated in 2012. He did one year at Naval Academy Prep School in Rhode Island. Now, he is in his last year at the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis. He is the President of the U.S. Naval Academy Pistol Team. He is also on the Dean's List, the Commandments List, and the Squad Leader of his squad. He just got accepted at the U.S. Naval Flight School in Pensacola, Florida, which he will attend in his graduation to become a Navy Pilot. So, both of them, Morgan and Matt, congratulations, and we're glad that you learned so much at Lacey High School. Congratulations, Nick Morandi. Your spot's right here in January. You'll enjoy it. It's a fun time. And as Mr. Wiggly said, he and I attended Sammy's Symposium, and also we'll be attending Monday night PJ Sullivan from the Lacey Police Department and Steve Willis, who is the founder of Hope Sheds Light. The two of them will be coming to the Lacey Library. It's presented by the Task Force, 7:00 Monday night, the whole town's invited. They'll be talking about substance abuse, substance, drug education, and drug awareness. So, we hope to see everyone there. Mr. Faulkner, Mr. Stewart, the rest of your coaches, your entire team, congratulations. Makes our district look wonderful. Thank you, President Downing.
Thank you. Mr. Claus?
Let's go a little bit.
Okay.
Just simple, congratulations to the Students of the Month and to the girls softball team. State champion's a big thing. We're going to expect it again next year, though. Just saying. Congratulations to all fall sports. You know, we had some great teams this year. And good luck to the winter sports that are coming up. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Mr. Ruth?
Sure, to a point. Thank you. Mr. Bidwell?
Thank you, Ms. Downing. I have a few things. First and foremost, of course, as always, congratulations to our Students of the Month and Unsung Hero. You guys make us proud each and every month. Softball team, incredibly proud of you guys. I sit next to a state champion who never lets any of us forget the fact that they were the first football state champs in the town of Lacey. I hope the softball team begins the same tradition. And I was a little excited because I knew that we did this in A-South, which as a school that's kind of, I guess, on the cusp of the size of A-South versus B-South, I thought we were going to be even better next year, but Kristin Santoro told me that B-South softball apparently is pretty tough. So, you guys have your, yeah, you're up to the challenge, I hope. So, good luck with that. Election results, congratulations again to Sean and to Linda. Nick, on the first day, when you come in, I'll take you and I'll show you the HR Department where you get your check.
[laughing]
In the pool. And I guess, on a serious note, as we're approaching the end of the year and Thanksgiving, you know, we should all be thankful for everything we have. As I think Ms. Downey, or Ms. DeSensa said, none of this comes for free. Veterans have made sacrifices on our behalf, and we should all, this time of year, we should be thinking about it all throughout the year, but especially this time of year, how fortunate we really are. And with that, I close my comments.
Thank you very much. And I, too, would like to congratulate Nicholas, Alyssa, for Students of the Month, and Ally being the unsung hero. Quite an honor for everyone. I'd also like to congratulate the softball team and congratulate our coaches, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Faulkner, you've been around for a long time, and you have influenced so many of our students here at the high school, so we, hats off to you, and thank you very much. And when Mr. Bidwell said that if you're up to the challenge for next year, I'm sure you are because you've always been, so good luck in the upcoming season. Mr. DeGeorge, thank you for a good audit. As I asked the question, is everything legal and done correctly? And it was, so we thank you very much for that. Veterans Day, it was that ceremony at Mill Pond, and I know there's others in the other schools, but I was able to attend Mill Pond, and it's just a touching ceremony where the students read about or talk about their family members, and it's very well-done. I want to thank Mrs. Anzalone, Subsea, and Ms. Pearson. They all did a great job. A lot of work goes into that, I guess, so, right? A lot of work, and so we want to thank them. I want to congratulate Sean for being re-elected. I look forward to another three years working with you. And congratulations, Mr. Morandi, and we look forward to having you sitting up here. I'm not sure you don't look too happy up there. Maybe you're having doubts, but welcome aboard. And I want to thank the voters for re-electing me for my ninth term. I really appreciate it. I'm very humbled, humbled, and thank you so much for your faith in me for another three years. I wish everyone a very happy, safe Thanksgiving. Please enjoy your families and think of those who are overseas and can't be home to enjoy their families. Thank you very much. And let's now move on to new business. Page 21. Could I have a motion for items A through S? Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa?
Yes, on all with four noes on item A, 260527, 953268, 953267, and 952867.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes, on all except for B.
Is that a no?
That's a no.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm going to vote yes, and I'm abstaining on the letter D for the ratification of agreement. I'm a member of the NJ PTSA, so I cannot vote on that. And I also would like to just reiterate Q. We have half-days at the high school, January 20th, and then the 23rd through the 25th. So, please mark that on your calendars. That's for midterm exams. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item two, donations. Please bear with me, we have a lot tonight. I'd like to thank, on behalf of the entire Board, for Cedar Creek, Home Depot, Forkett River for school supplies, seventy-five dollars, and Anthony's Pizza for monetary donation of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. At the Forkett River School, we have Mary Consulman, who donated three-hundred dollars, Anne Marie Cooney for school supplies and backpacks for a value of two-hundred dollars, the New Jersey Sea Grant Consortium for an assembly program, six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, Home Depot of Forkett River for school supplies of a hundred dollars, LTSD Transportation Department for Halloween costumes and trick-or-treat bags for a value of two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, Shelley Minucci Halloween costumes for a value of four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. At Lenoka Harbor, we have donations from Ernie Tritola for classroom fans, two of them, for a value of two-hundred-and-fifty. Epic Well Drilling for pizza donation for the Week of Respect, bulletin board contest winners for a value of forty dollars, and Karen Castillo donated twenty dollars towards Halloween costumes. At Mill Pond, again, Home Depot Forkett River for a variety of office supplies for a value of three-hundred dollars. At the high school, we have Printastic LLC for a Navy Nation banner on the football field worth five-hundred dollars. The Lacey Township High School PTSA for a monetary donation to the junior class of five-hundred dollars. Wawa, a beverage coupons for English class competition, twenty-five of them for a value of thirty-five dollars. Forkett River Rotary Foundation, a monetary donation to the AADA of five-hundred dollars. The Loyal Order of Moose donated a monetary donation to the softball team of two-hundred dollars. Lacey Storm Traveling Softball League donated two-thousand dollars for the softball team. Ocean First Bank, again, a monetary donation of a hundred dollars to the softball team. Lacey Township High School Boosters, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollar donation to the softball team. Thompson Chiropractic, a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar donation to the softball team. We're getting a lot of donations here. Lacey Township PBA Local 238 for donation of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the softball team. The Township of Lacey, monetary donation for Ada at seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Lacey Youth Wrestling Club, a monetary donation for artwork by Debbie Sines for one-thousand dollars. And last but not least, the Lacey Township High School PTSA, a monetary donation to Ada for five-hundred dollars, for a total of nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. So, on behalf of the Board, we thank you very much for all your generosity. Could I have a motion, please? Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Claus?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. DeSensa?
Yes, and thank you to all.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Page 27, item three, Programs in Curriculum A. Could I have a motion, please? Second. Roll call?
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm going to abstain on A, not because of a conflict, but because of a perception. Item four, Professional Days and Workshops, A. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Excuse me, the motion has to be with amendment?
Yes, I was about to say, we're going to amend A.
We're going to add regen to this one?
Yeah, Mrs. DeSensa will attend the School Board's workshop at a cost of one-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars.
December 2nd.
December 2nd.
When is it, December 2nd?
December 2nd.
How much was it?
One-four-nine.
Nine dollars.
Dave, aren't you going with it?
I'm not. I don't want to spend the money for it.
Okay.
Just don't think we can afford it.
All right, could I have a motion then, as amended?
Move.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa?
Do I abstain from the whole motion?
No, you abstained from the portion of the motion that relates to you, please.
Okay, yes on the motion and then the abstention on my course.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item five, Certificated Personnel, Items A through K. Could I have a motion, please? Yes. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Item six, Support Non-Certificated Staff Personnel, Items A through G. Could I have a motion? Tabling E. Let me reword that. Support Non-Certificated Staff Personnel, A through D. We're going to vote A through D first. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call, please. We're voting on items A through D.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Now, could I have a motion for items? Or tabling E, so item?
Is amended?
So, how do we? Okay, we're going to vote on item two, table E, the first part. Joanne Nacasta will table that part. Could I have a motion to ta? Move.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.